Okay, ladies and gentlemen, apologies for the delay. We're going to get started. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Counselors, could I ask that you sign in, please? Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Thank you. So first, we have Committee of the Whole closed meeting.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following items. A, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, 3891 Kingston Road 15. Item B, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, public parking supply in the downtown.
And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will reconvene. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed a couple of different items, property at 3891 Kingston Road 15, and also public parking supply in the downtown. So with that, I will ask for a motion to waive our rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting and that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived, and the clerk report.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that the city sell 3891 Kingston Road 15 to 582561 Ontario Limited for $152,000 and that the net proceeds from the sale of the property be deposited into the municipal capital reserve fund.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Neal, that the city purchase 27 Brock Street and 38 to 40 Princess Street for $6.2 million, with $1.2 million of the purchase price and associated closing costs of approximately $125,000 to be sourced from the parking reserve fund, and $5 million through the issuance of debt to be financed/repaid from the annual parking revenues, and that the chief administrative officer be delegated the authority to sign the agreement of purchase and sale and all other documents required to complete the purchase in a form satisfactory to the Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor.
And that carries. Okay, moving on to approval of the added's. We have an additional report from Planning Committee. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Shell.
Thank you. I, Liz Shell, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, Report Number 92, Planning Committee, 752 King Street West, as my mother owns a property beside it.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of bylaws 7 and 10, as I have clients affected by these bylaws.
Okay, seeing no other disclosures of pecuniary interest, we will move on. We do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Glenn Volbrecht, President and CEO of St. Lawrence College, will appear before council, speak to Clause Number 1 of Report Number 89, received from the CAO with respect to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Kingston and St. Lawrence College. And just a note to our delegation, you have five minutes.
Great. Your worship, members of council, I really appreciate being here today and given the opportunity to speak about the partnership agreement with the city. You know, it's quite appropriate that I'm here today. Today was the first day of classes, and we welcome thousands of students across all three of our campuses, across the eastern region. And the reason I say appropriate is because these students will soon be graduates, and these graduates are going to be the future leaders of our college and of our community. You know, if there's one thing that I'd like you to take away from our vision statement, it's those first four words, rooted in our communities. Because everything we do at St. Lawrence is about being rooted in our communities. We started off very humble in the basement of LCVI, about 86 students, 50 years ago. Today, we're 10,000 students strong, and we're training students and educating students across the globe. Our key performance indicators, very proud to say, we've been in the top three colleges in the province for about the last 17 years. And why this is important for Kingston is that you should know that 100% in 2017, 100% of our employers, of our grads, were satisfied with their performance, and close to 90% of our students are getting jobs within the first six months. St. Lawrence is a huge contributor and driver of economic activity in this region. In fact, close to $1 billion each year is the result of St. Lawrence College, and Kingston, over $600 million alone. You know, we're very fortunate in this community to have three fantastic post-secondary institutions. But what makes St. Lawrence College different is that 85% of our students will live, work, and play in this community. They stay here. In fact, one of every four households has a St. Lawrence College grad. And over the last 50 years, we've graduated over 90,000 students, and you can see the impact it's made in Kingston alone. These are some of the top five employers. You'll see the City of Kingston's right there, so thank you for that. So if I take two seconds now just to talk a little bit about Hello Future, because Hello Future is about training, it's about educating our future leaders. It's our single largest project in the history, the largest project we've ever had in the history of St. Lawrence College, about $42 million. It will be lead gold, and by this time next year, we'll hopefully be in the building. But you know, it's not just about the building. Yes, it's going to be an amazing place, but really, it's about providing our students with the state-of-the-art equipment, the technology that they need to be future leaders in this community. And that's why we're so excited about having the opportunity to enter into a partnership agreement with the city. You know, the college has always been a huge contributor to the labor force. We've participated in the committees. We're a big part of Kingston in making sure that the talent that we have stays and the talent that we have in this community is trained properly. And that talent development retention is really a joint effort that we'd like to take on with the City of Kingston. So we're really pleased to be considered for this partnership. And you should know that in Kingston, we have about 6,000 students studying right now. They are our future leaders of this community. Thank you for your time. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, do we have any? We do have a briefing next. Matt Cusson, Workforce Development Analyst, will provide a briefing with respect to Information Report Number 3,
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'm very excited and pleased to present highlights of the work that has been undertaken thus far since the passage of the Youth Employment Strategy just about a year ago today. So in the council package, there is an information report and accompanying attachment, but I do want to just give an overview of the Youth Employment Strategy as well as some of the city and community initiatives that have taken place over the past year. So from an employment perspective, it's critical that we begin to better integrate youth into our workforce and provide them with the tools they need to succeed. And it's widely accepted that the number of youth currently entering the workforce won't be sufficient to meet the future demand. The community drivers of the Youth Employment Strategy are working together to address this need, but the major focus of the strategy is centered on facilitating this entry into the workforce from a young job seeker's standpoint. And these numbers begin to shed light on the need to tackle employment from this youth perspective. So 21,450 is the median total income before tax of those aged 15 to 34, the lowest of any age group of the 2014 tax filer information. And while this strategy was focused on 15 to 24-year-olds, this gives us a sense of where they may be at as well. 87% of these filers under the age of 34 reported employment income, but this suggests that most are working in low-paying jobs or are not working full-time hours. So this kind of gives the impetus for the Youth Employment Strategy. So 16.3% of youth who are seeking work in Kingston were unemployed. And youth are also three times more likely to be, about three times more likely to be unemployed than older job seekers. So there's lots of work to be done. Very briefly, I'm going to give a life cycle of the strategy so far. So back in March of 2015, there were focus groups that were brought together to gather perspectives on barriers facing youth. In May 2015, it was identified as a strategic priority and the 2015-28 Strategic Plan. Going from that, council gave direction to staff to partner with United Way back in June 2015 to develop the strategy. 20 businesses and organizations then met to further develop this strategy, and council then endorsed the strategy back in August of 2016. And over the past year, the Strategic Steering Committee has been meeting and taking action as necessary. So I'm going to touch on some of the city-led initiatives that have taken place over the past year. And I'm going to start with the city's Youth Employment Initiative, which basically is a framework designed to attract and retain underemployed youth and leverage their ability to play an active role in filling anticipated labor shortages across the city. And there's four distinct programs that are defined under this umbrella of the city's Youth Employment Initiative. Before I get to those, I should mention that I believe we're one of the only, or if not the only, municipality in Ontario that has such a centralized and multifaceted youth employment framework. So first, the city has an opportunity to access existing programming through partnerships with local post-secondary institutions. And when we say institutional programs, we mean paid internships that are structured under established programs. And these are with term lengths ranging anywhere from eight to 16 months. And as a starting point, the city has partnered with Queen's, the Queen's undergraduate internship program, which is beginning with the launch of three city internships this month, and further opportunities are being explored in partnership with Queen's and St. Lawrence and other educational institutions down the road. Second is the recent graduate program, which is aimed at onboarding talented and highly motivated youth who have recently earned a post-secondary degree, certificate, or diploma. And successful applicants would be hired on a contract basis with a term length of 12 months, with options to extend contracts or offer full-time employment where appropriate at the end of a successful tenure. So this will set an example for both public and private institutions in the city by offering youth-targeted and entry-level positions in Kingston and striving to retain the talent that would otherwise be bound for employment in other locations. So thirdly, special projects. So these will provide experiential learning as part of a co-op or degree program at a recognized post-secondary or secondary school. And they'll be short-term, so one to four months unpaid, so long as award is given academically for any successful completed work term. So 165, this is a number that we don't see or talk about probably enough. So the city employs about 165 youth each summer, students. And this is a well-established program that we've carried out each summer. It focuses on more non-career-related positions, such as lifeguards or camp counselors. And there aren't any major changes to this program, but it is important to highlight nonetheless. So the city's framework will be shared as a best practice among local agencies and organizations. And this is where the real change can occur. It's one thing for the city to be able to make these changes and have an impact, but if these changes can spread to other organizations where they're changing their structure or they're introducing a framework, that's where the real change can occur. And this will be something that we're focused on in the coming months. So the second major initiative that the city focused on was barriers to entry. So the city's HR department has reviewed approximately 25 non-unionized job descriptions to reduce barriers to entry-level positions. And the number of years of experience have been reduced where appropriate, which makes these positions more accessible to youth. The city will continue to review these positions in all departments. And finally, the third initiative that the city, that I'd like to highlight that the city worked on was a new pilot project that was launched, which provides six-month internships for placements for youth who would otherwise be in receipt of Ontario Works or Ontario Disability Support Program benefits. So there's two placement opportunities that were created, one with the United Way and one with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And the success of this program has prompted its continuation into its second year. So in the last couple minutes, I just want to focus on a few or highlight a few community-based initiatives that have taken place over the past year. So in terms of program development, Resolve Credit and Financial Counseling Services created the Smart Start Youth Financial Literacy Program. And this is to help youth gain skills and information about budgeting, saving, and investing money. And to date, the program has been delivered to youth all across the city. Kingston Act Dev launched the 2017 Summer Company Program on April 1st. So this program provides funding, support, and coaching to full-time students who want to run a business during the summer. And lastly, Queen's has developed major maps. So these are year-by-year guides for each program that helps students explore potential career paths. In terms of additional resources, so Employment and Career Services at St. Lawrence has invested in a new business development advisor position. So they work with employers to uncover hidden job markets for youth and coordinate job fairs and educate employers on the programs and services available to help and hire, sorry, to hire and train youth. As well, Keys has invested in a full-time employer liaison that focuses on increasing access and knowledge of programs available to assist employers also with hiring and training youth. And lastly, a couple events to highlight. Keys hosted the Kingston Job Fair in March of 2017. They had over 1,500 attendees and 50-plus employers or exhibitors on site. And as well, a forum was held in April 2017 for educators from the Limestone District School Board and Algonquin Lakeshore Catholic District School Boards, which provided an update about resources available to youth at risk. So based on these suggestions, United Way has since developed a resource that provides information for these programs all in one place online. So I just wanted to give a big thank you to all the community organizations, businesses, and youth who continue to tirelessly work to improve employer prospects in the city for youth. And the work is far from over, but I think we're off to a great start. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. With regard to the opportunities for Ontario Works youth, why is six months for the internship? Why was that decided on? Because it doesn't seem like a very long time to learn a great deal.
So I'm going to pass that one off to Lanny just because she was the one who was more involved in that project.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you. So we looked at actually some of the programs that are existing in other communities, I think specifically in Toronto, and what they had established in terms of internships. So we modeled this particular internship based on some of the best practices, but we also obviously looked at the funding that was available. And what we tried to do is ensure that with the funding that we had, which is all provincial funding, that we could maximize the number of youth that could actually participate in those types of internships. They have been, although six months may not seem like a very long time, the two that we've done so far have been very successful. In one case, the person was hired, and the other situation, we had a youth going back to school as a result. And we're in the process of implementing the next two internships.
Thank you. My follow-up question had to do with what further connections we would give to allow for the person in order to develop them further. But I think the commissioners sort of touched on that that thinking is going on.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent work. The, I guess, two questions. One might be more directed towards Commissioner Hurdle as well because it has to do with ministry funding, so I'll begin with that. So the programs, like many of the organizations that are listed in the strategy as partners, are funded provincially, as mentioned, by ministry-trained colleges and universities, which I know has a new name and I don't know what it is. But is there also ministry funding from the Ministry of Children and Youth Services? Is that? How does the provincial funding come together within this project?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So each organization is coming to the table and offering to be part of an initiative or project. So depending on their sources of funding, that's where it would apply. So I'm not quite sure how all of their, each of their own sources of funding actually work in terms of every single agency. In our situation, in terms of the city itself, it's a combination of both provincial funding and also city funding.
So then leveraging existing funds that flow through the Ontario Works? Okay, thank you. The next question has to do with partnering with school boards. And I guess the potential, when we look at the youth demographic, it's, we're looking at age 15, as young as 15. So apart from summer job opportunities where students, as they progress in their academic pursuits and career pursuits, have opportunities for those types of placements, are there other ways that you think we could improve on sort of general awareness and education working with school boards and school-aged youth to help them, whether through the guidance counselor in their school, develop a sense of what opportunities might exist in Kingston and what, and how we could facilitate that career path?
Through you. So in the context of the Youth Employment Strategy and the work that the city has done, I think that school boards could definitely play a role in the special projects aspect of this. So those are flexible where if staff have a project that comes up, they would let HR know that was appropriate for a student to work on. And it's not, we've been focusing mostly on post-secondary institutions, but we do, in the coming year, want to expand that as well to secondary schools and reach out to the school boards to see where we can partner on that front. So in terms of getting co-op placements in here, if that was what you're referring to, then I think there's definitely room for that, and that's something that we're going to continue to work on in the future.
Mr. Cusson, I have a question for you. So you'd mentioned in your presentation that the city has offered a number of co-op opportunities, a number of internships, and that now the next step is for this to catch on with the community at large, to have other organizations and institutions play that part. So I'm interested to know what's involved in taking that next step. I was thinking, one thought is, is there a way to get feedback on the experience that the city has had to be able to show that it's been a very positive experience, certainly from my observation, and to be able to help to share that, to encourage those institutions that these are the benefits that we've experienced as a city?
Through you. So one of the initiatives that our HR department is working on is they're putting together some videos that will highlight some of the experience that some of our younger staff and interns have had. I know that these are in the works of being produced, and I think will serve that purpose of getting that message out there that the city is employing youth and that it's working and that the youth who are working here are enjoying it and enjoying their experience. So that'll be one tool for sure, and that'll be definitely a focus moving forward is how do we get that to catch on to other organizations? Because that is how the major, major change in the city will occur.
Say your hand.
Just to add to Matt's comments, Mr. Mayor, the workforce development and in-migration strategy which council just approved a couple of weeks ago will also tie nicely into the Youth Employment Strategy. Youth Employment Strategy is about a year ahead of the launch of the implementation of that particular plan. But essentially, the partners that are at the table with that workforce development plan have been, there have been numerous, including private sector, nonprofit. And all of those are committed not only to rethinking the approach to talent development, but at the same time, rethinking the approach to operations and the acquisition of strategic employment opportunities. So I think that this has been a good experience and we continue to move forward with the focus on youth, but at the same time, dovetail them together so that at the end of the day, it really becomes a community cultural, a cultural linkage that enables the community to see that good employment with talented workforce will prove for economic and community success.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, do we have any petitions this evening? Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. I have a petition that was brought to me by the residents in my district concerning the recent events in the local news and the national news. So... So it reads, "We, the undersigned, ask Kingston City Council to diligently examine the following before declaring Kingston as a sanctuary city. That each asylum seeker go through the federal government immigration process, the cost to taxpayers in Kingston in such areas as social services, housing, and available employment opportunities, and further what impact on local schools and healthcare services. Further, what available funding there is from the province and the federal government." There was 68 signatures. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Seeing no other petitions, we will move on. We have no motions of congratulations or other recognition. We have no deferred motions, so we will move to reports. First up, we have report number 88 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Holland, seconded by Councilor Hutchinson, that report number 88 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are six clauses. Would anyone, like any of those clauses separated? Councilor Neal, clause four. Councilor Stroud? Okay. So first, we will vote on the non-flagged items. So clause one is a bylaw to amend by law number 98-294, a bylaw to authorize participation in the Ontario Municipal Employees Retirement System, or OMRs. Clause three, request for noise exemption, St. Lawrence College outdoor movie event. Clause five, agreement with the Continuous Improvement Fund for procurement options analysis for the material recovery facility. And clause six, unopened road allowance access and improvement agreement for Grizzly Holdings, Inc., at 3697 Highway 2. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. So back to clause two, request for a noise exemption in Vista Front Road Railway Crossing Construction. Councilor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to ask a question to staff about this, and I note in the report that there were, that the file evolved somewhat from the initial application, and that now the applicant has agreed to suspend the overnight work, which seemed to be the most controversial element to the exemption. If maybe staff could explain sort of the chronology there and, and start with maybe what the rationale was to ask for the overnight, like what was the pressing need for the overnight work in the first place?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. So the overnight request is still part of the application that's before council this evening. Through the course of working through this process with the applicant and also taking into consideration the notices of concern that we received from two residents, we worked through that with Invist to look at whether or not there were some alternatives or some other mitigation suggestions that could be taken into consideration. So one of those considerations was to evaluate how much work they were able to accomplish within the first 24-hour period. If sufficient work was completed, there wouldn't be a need to work through the second evening. So that is what's being proposed on Saturday evening, looking at whether or not they've been able to accomplish what they had, knowing that they built some extra time into their schedule just for contingency purposes.
Okay. So, so thank you for that clarification. So in essence, the first, the first evening and overnight would, the work would be 24 hours straight, and if they got far enough by the Saturday evening, they might not have to do a second overnight session? Is that what you just said?
That's correct.
But doesn't answer, you didn't answer my initial question of why the timeline is so, so compressed as to require the 24-hour around-the-clock work. Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. It is a fairly substantial piece of infrastructure replacement that needs to take place in order to fix what needs to be fixed. So without getting too technical, and we do have some members of the Invist team here if there are more technical questions related to the work. As I understand it, the work that's being completed, it is a very large section that goes beyond even the width of the road allowance, but it actually is one piece. So there aren't several sections that could be broken up into incremental parts of the project. It is literally lifted as one huge piece and a new, brand-new piece is put in place. And so therefore, it has to be continuous work to be able to do the installation as per the equipment that's there.
Okay. So the nature, the technical nature of the work is what requires the compressed work schedule, not that there's some kind of deadline that they have to do it by. It's just the, once they start it, they have to finish it.
That's correct.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on clause two. And that carries. Finally, clause four, Streets Bylaw Amendment for 33 Benson Street. Councilor Neal?
Yes, I'm a little curious. I'm familiar with, with that site, and it seems to me that those parking spaces have been in existence for some time. When did we first realize that there was an encroachment on municipal property for those parking spots?
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, your worship. It's my understanding and discussion with staff that the understanding that those 13 parking spaces, a portion of which is residing on the municipal road allowance, came to our knowledge as part of the, that particular property, which is going through a site planning process. So this report and recommendation is really to address that issue that's come to our knowledge through the site plan process.
I appreciate that. So in fact, those parking spaces have been there for decades. So, and, and I'm happy that, that we caught it when we did. I'm just curious about the $340 annual fee to correct that. How do we come up with that particular number? Because it works out to be about seven cents a day per parking spot.
Through your worship, unfortunately, I was not involved in those discussions in terms of trying to analyze an appropriate fee for, for the license agreement. The report does speak to the fact that there was not some form of a, of a case example that we could use as a comparator, but we had worked with the real estate division to try to come up with some fair market value for what that licensing fee would be. I think the report also notes that we can, we can offer an opportunity to address that in the future if need be.
I just have to say, I wish on my street, where there's now paid parking, that I had a seven-cent a day option, but thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause four. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. On to report 89 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Stroud, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that report number 89 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted, clause by clause.
So clause one is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Kingston and St. Lawrence College. Councilor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm really pleased that this is happening. I'll, I'll ask a question about the, the idea of this provides a new framework for action. How does a memorandum of understanding sort of improve or enhance our relationship with St. Lawrence? I realize we've got one with Queen's, so I get it, this is part of a continuum, but how does a more formal memorandum sort of help the city with our, our goals?
Councilor Hunt?
Through you, your worship. So, so in the, in the past number of years, there has not been, as you noted, a formal memorandum of understanding. And what that enables us to do, or has enabled us to do, is to work in an ad hoc sense without any particular focus around some of the initiatives that we know we can capitalize on because of the nature of the work of the community college, as well as the number of the initiatives that the council has directed and that are of value to the community, including workforce development and, and the development of talent and the attraction and, and student attraction to the community, in migration, and a whole host of, of things. So we, we have in the past had a town gown committee that was, that included Queen's, the city, St. Lawrence, and, and RMC. And over time, that had done some work with respect to neighborhood improvement and, and certain issues that, that, you know, was important to have a dialogue with the various institutions. But as we have, I'm going to say, matured a little bit, we see the value in terms of bringing a more focused approach to working together. And this is, this is modeled under the one that we signed about a year ago with Queen's, where, where there is a steering team that meets periodically once a quarter in order to talk about the opportunities that can be created, and in this case, with St. Lawrence College and the city.
Thank you. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson, did I see your?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say that I also welcome this. I think it's a very good next step to the type of partnerships we've been pursuing for a while in, as the CAO said, in an informal way. The main thing I, I thought was that the way in which the concepts are sharpened and there's more specific reference to programmatic elements, which to me is a step forward. And I just had a couple of questions. The first one is, just to the start and end date, the question, my question was to the CAO is why was it only a year since initiative this, or it's going to take a lot more than a year? I think I have an idea, but I'd like to know for sure.
Councilor Hunt?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, didn't you hear the, the full question?
If you look at part five, start and end date, says the, the MOU will be effective through September 30, 2018, at which time it will expire unless extended by mutual agreement.
So through you, your worship, the intent of that was to, to try it out for a year, like pilot, to make sure that there was value in the partnership, to, to see whether or not the aspects of the, of the MOU, including the strategic steering team, were able to function in accordance with what is contemplated in the MOU. And at that point in time, if there needs to be some changes that, or modifications, then we would be bringing it forward. I don't think either Mr. Bolbrak or myself believe that it'll come to an end. We, we see it as a mutually extension, a mutual agreement to extend, but that's why that wording is included.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure we were looking further ahead. I didn't doubt we were, but then it said it would be done in a year. So the other thing is, I don't suppose you know, but do you have any idea what the kind of cost estimates which would be involved? Particularly, as I note that we're talking about the development of infrastructure and support systems, it says there could be additional physical space, which I take would be along the lines of the incubation space we've already developed down on.
So, Councilor Hutchinson, I don't think I heard the question in that. Can you just, can you just?
The question was if they had any cost estimates in the financial plans that are not entirely worked out yet. And what it would include, it says, for instance, it would include, could include additional physical space, such as, I presume, we have, like that we've already done down on Ontario, on King Street, right?
Councilor Hunt?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, there is no specific space identified or at this, in this particular memorandum. However, council has talked about post-secondary campuses. Community colleges have worked with municipalities in the past on various programs and/or facilities in terms of certain funding, because they are, those are community-type structures that are built. So at this point in time, it's, it's early to identify those things. However, we use these words particularly so that as we work through some of the elements, we have the ability to discuss them in accordance with this agreement.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I want to express my support for ongoing partnership with St. Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. I would just like to say that I think this is great that St. Lawrence has come today and tonight to present all this great information, a lot of stuff I had no idea, $600 million in economic payback to the city, and also how many students stay in Kingston. So this is great information, and I really, I welcome this information coming to us more often. Would be great if we could get this, that would be great too. And I think the integration with the youth strategy and all the services that you're bringing together with St. Lawrence and the youth strategy is, is a great idea and great collaboration. So I welcome this strategy, and I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Clause two, capital project status report, second quarter 2017. Councilor Shell?
The Unity Road traffic signal installation. I think this is very good news for our previous councillor. I think this was one of the things that he regretted that had been taken out, so I'd like to thank staff for, for working to get this going. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, we will call the vote then on clause number two. And that carries. Report number 90 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report number 90 from Municipal Accessibility Committee, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Councilor Neal, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that report number 90 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
And that carries. Okay. On to report 91 from this, received from the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration. Councilor Osannick?
Your worship, it's my pleasure to present report number 91 from the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration, be received and adopted.
Moved by Councilor Osannick, seconded by Councilor George, that report number 91 from the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. The first, that Leonor Foster be ratified for appointment to the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration as a former member of council representative. Clause two, that Shelby, Gargaro, and Succi James be ratified for appointment to the Citizen Committee to Review Council Remuneration as citizen representatives. And clause three, that Annette Phillips be appointed as the primary representative and Paul K. Chan be appointed as the alternative representative for the education sector, and that the resignation of A. Scott Carson be received with regret. So we will call the vote on all three clauses. So we will call the vote on all three clauses. And that carries. Okay, on to report number ninety-two from Planning Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report number two, ninety-two, from the Planning Committee, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Osannick, that report number ninety-two from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are six clauses. We are going to separate clause one for Counselor Shell's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations? Okay, Counselor Neal would like clause two separated as well. Okay, so first, we will vote on clauses three through six. Clause three is the approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment sixty-six Earl Street. Clause four, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment nine fifty Centennial Drive. Clause five, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment ninety-four Carruthers Avenue. And clause six, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment forty-six County And that carries. Okay, clause one, approval of an application for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of subdivision, seven fifty-two King Street West. And that carries. Clause two, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment three forty-six University Avenue. Counselor Neal.
Yes, this is one of a couple of properties that has, have come up recently in the Williamsville area that have been a kind of frustration within the neighborhood for some time. Just to give a little bit of background, this address first came forward in two thousand and ten. They overbuilt the property beyond the approved building. They were, it was pointed out to them that that was the case. They applied for a zoning amendment to correct that, and then went years without properly completing their zoning application. And the result was that now, almost eight years later, they've come forward with, with a request, I believe, because they may be contemplating selling the property and they can't, without it being in compliance. I know and I appreciate that our planning department is trying to address this kind of concern where a developer can go years, continue to rent for profit, a part of his property that isn't in compliance with, with the existing zoning. Because of that principle, I voted against this at Planning Committee, and I'll vote against it again tonight, although I'm not lobbying anybody to vote against it as well, because clearly it has to be remedied. I appreciate that planning is now addressing this issue, as they're addressing site plans that go beyond the approved date. And I look forward to that becoming the protocol that we follow in future. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries by vote of ten to two. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. We do have several information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand. First, twenty sixteen Development Charge Reserve Fund Statement, twenty sixteen Impost Fee Reserve Fund Statement. Number two, second quarter operating budget status report for twenty seventeen. Number three, Youth Employment Strategy Year One Update. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have a couple of motions. First, that the resignation of Vivian Piquet from the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Tom Carpenter from the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum be received with regret. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Neal. And that carries. We have no new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Turner, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that the minutes of City Council meeting number two thousand and seventeen dash nineteen held Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand and seventeen, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have no tabling of documents. We do have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I will ask for bylaws, please.
Counselor George, your excuse for the first two bylaw votes, please. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws seven and ten be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws seven and ten be given their third reading.
And that carries.
Counselor George, you can return, please. Counselor Shell, your excuse for the next two bylaw votes. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws twenty-nine and thirty be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws twenty-nine and thirty be given their third reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws one through six, eight, nine, and eleven and twenty-eight be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that clause eleven point three four of bylaw two thousand and ten dash one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws two and three, three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that bylaws two through twenty-eight and thirty-one through thirty-five be given their third reading.
That carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Bohm.
Still waiting for one, please.
So nobody can leave until everybody has voted.
Counselors, we're waiting for one vote, please.
And that carries. Thank you very much.